Regular agenda Brennan.
Mayor Smith, I would like to have item number three, or D, number three of the City Plan Commission, public hearing, three public hearings and rescheduled regular meeting minutes be pulled from this agenda and brought forward at a future city council meeting. I just received them today and with the lengthy discussion that occurred last week at the Plan Commission for one of the projects during the public hearing and Plan Commission, I have not had time to actually go through the minutes yet in full detail to bring to the council.
Okay, so Brennan's asking that we just pull the, the minutes of those meetings, although we, he's only talking about the minutes of the meeting, there actually is an item that we are going to act on later in the council meeting, but this would just be the minutes. Anything else that council members would like to see moved?
Move to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Keela and second by Hackett that we approve of the consent agenda with the additions and the one deletion. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, under regular agenda, okay, Sandy has one item to hand out, or that she did hand out.
She did hand out, yes. Under number nine A, a correction to the budget summary sheet was distributed.
That's that blue sheet that you received, yeah, it's on your desk. Anything else? If there isn't anything else, we would need a motion to approve the regular agenda with that one correction.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keela and second by Lockwood that we approve the regular agenda with that one correction. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Non-agenda items and announcements, there are no new announcements tonight. We do have time set aside for public input. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, they can do that by stepping up to the podium and giving their name and address for the record and limit their discussion to five minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give us some public input on non-agenda items? Alright, we'll move on then to department announcements and reports and we, obviously everybody's seen our new Finance Director Treasurer Kathy Kaza and we'll put her on the spot here just to say hi again and I'm sure she's got everything figured out, so she'll be able to just step right in and do it for us. Kathy?
I did find my way into the City Hall on Monday morning, even though it was much colder than I expected. We're getting caught up because of some absences in the department. After Jean had left, we are trying to pick up and get some of the stuff done, so you did receive tonight only like half the bills. I couldn't get them all entered in today. But I'm happy to be here. If any of the council members have any questions, my door is always open for any of you to step by and see me.
Kathy, what's your, do you have an email address yet?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and it's?
It's K. Kaza, K.A.S. as in Sam, Z as in zebra, A at cityofwapaka.org.
Okay, so again, we could reach her that way or call her, or she's actually taken over, if you've been in City Hall, Josh's office, Josh has moved into Jean's office and Kathy has moved into Josh's office so she can be closer to the action, so. Alright, thanks Kathy and good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Library Director Peggy.
Thank you Mayor Smith. We're really excited because last week our Apron Chronicles exhibit opened and you should recognize that this is described as America's most nostalgic, thought-provoking, intergenerational traveling exhibit in the nation. So, and we are the very first Wisconsin site to host this exhibit and the exhibit's been in existence for over 10 years. So, it's very exciting for us. It is an interesting trip. You'll really want to spend some time in there and pay attention to the apron stories and hopefully share some of your apron stories with us too because it seems like everybody has an apron story. On December 4th, we have a film come to the stable and it is a, and a holiday film with a lighthearted kind of story to it, and that's at 1:30. Dr. Jack Rhodes will be leading the commentary on that. On Tuesday, December 9th, we have a World War II program for our Lunch and Learn Remembering the USS Indianapolis, so you're all invited at 12 o'clock on that day. We do have a holiday basket drawing this year. Friends of the Library have sponsored once again some beautiful gift baskets and all you need to do is answer a few survey questions in order to enter to win one of those baskets. We have a book to art club that's reading Chasing Vermeer and they're going to be meeting on the first Saturday of the month to create some stationery. Our children's nighttime story hours on December 4th and they're, they have a baking theme with an apron making component. Our planning process, we're starting to wrap that up. We will be having community conversations and all of you will be invited to come and give us some input on how we can answer some of the strategic questions that have been identified for the library. The Foundation, Library Foundation has generously sponsored, sponsored a snack or a light meal for those times and there'll be four different times, so hopefully there's a time that each of you can plan on attending on December 8th, that's a Monday. And thank you very much.
Thanks Peggy. Any questions, comments for Peggy? If not, we'll move on to Brennan.
Thank you Mayor, members of, or council, excuse me. Apologies for getting my report late to you guys. I actually was out finishing my last IEDC course last week in North Carolina. I do want to say I appreciate the support that the council and, you know, Henry's given me to continue to get my certification Economic Development. That exam hopefully will be passed next June down in Madison, so I'm looking forward to that. So now I have the next seven months to study. I also want to acknowledge just Josh Warner's department. Some of the council members may have seen on the Wynn TV, we've been broadcasting little snippets of videos once a month. The, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce to highlight some of the businesses in downtown, giving them, going and doing a couple of interviews with the different businesses located in downtown, just the biz buzz I believe is what we're calling it. And so far, so well. We've done, I think, four videos. The last three were shot last month at Studio 212 embellishments and the paint store, not the pain store that identified on my executive report. But we're looking to continue and expand that into 2015 as part of our strategic planning that we worked with the council on and staff to see what the different months hold, like October of Manufacturers Month, so we're hopefully gonna, you know, highlight some of the different months that we have, Small Business Month is in November. So I just want to acknowledge Josh's time and effort that he's put into that. Last couple of weeks, the months have been just really looking at the strategic plan and planning for 2015, working with Henry with the budget process and some of the projects that we have in there for next year with the East Gateway area and doing an RFP for some market study on that area. Henry and I also went up to Stevens Point and met with the Community Development Director up there about their CDA and how the CDA operates up there. And again, that's some of the strategies that we're looking to implement in 2015, hopefully here with the city as another tool that we can utilize for business attraction and expansion of the existing business climate here in the community. Just an update on Main Street, the next vision committee meeting will be on December 1st, the location's to be determined. And I want to give, acknowledge both of the interns that are working here at the city right now in my department. Nathan Woods is actually here this evening sitting in on the council meeting, but both of them have been working very hard, not only to updates or continue to update some of the Main Street website and the Community and Economic Development website, but also Nathan's been working with Henry and myself on looking at a couple of grant opportunities that we're looking to possibly submit for in 2015 for some of the planning monies that we need for Main Street hopefully as we progress into 2015. The project with East Central should finish in the first quarter of 2015 and then we're hoping to start up right away with the next phase, which is more of a downtown plan and the Main Street area. And finally, I just want to finish up on Bethany Holmes. Everyone, or mostly everyone probably was either at the meeting last week, Tuesday, at the Plan Commission, the public hearing, or have heard through the grapevine. The Plan Commission did table that application. We did have a full house here that evening. We had about a three-hour meeting. Good discussion that came out of that meeting. There's, I want to say that, you know, we're definitely, as staff, we're listening to the concerns that were brought up by the neighborhoods. We do have a petition that we are taking serious and Bethany is, or has scheduled a neighborhood meeting that they are going to host here with the immediate neighbors on December 3rd, so we'll be there to, at least to facilitate and listen to the comments and try to address any additional concerns that any of the neighbors have right now. It's anticipated that application will go back to the Plan Commission in December for consideration by the Plan Commission.
Awesome.
And I, and I want to, if there are any questions with Bethany Holmes, I know that there's a lot of different, I don't want to utilize the word rumors, but different comments and concerns that are being brought forward to any of you guys that are on the council. Feel free to come in, stop by and talk with me about the project, John, as well when it comes to the engineering aspect of it, because I know there's been some concerns about stormwater and everything else. I have an open door. The project is out on my desk right now, so more than willing to address any comments or concerns that any council member have on that project, but looks to be hopefully an exciting project that we can move forward with soon.
Alright, thanks Brennan. Any questions, comments for Brennan? Alright, let's move on to our Director of Public Works, John Edelbeck.
Okay, my report is on page 30 of the packet. I've broken up our, our information, our projects on short-term, mid and long-term, so I'll just kind of go through some of the short-term briefly. Relton Street water main project's been completed, the lines energized, those homeowners are now obtaining water from the new water main and we've made sidewalk repairs across the street, so the only remaining item is some easement signatures. The, I want to commend the property owners out there have been very cooperative, very supportive, even the ones that weren't affected directly by the water outage, so thank you again very much. Curbside leaf collection is ongoing. I want to thank the media for their support in getting the word out on that for us. We will continue to pick up leaves in town until we can't anymore, so the snow has not stopped us, so if you get questions or concerns, we have gone through the city once and we're going back through again and picking up leaves, so if you do have any locations you're concerned that might have been missed or piles that are still out there, you know, let me know, but we are still going through the city at this, at this point and picking up leaves. Chain of Lakes Sanitary District Agreement, our wastewater treatment agreement has expired now after 20 years. We've been negotiating now for the last six months or so on this and we're meeting again tomorrow and hopefully things go well, we'll be bringing the agreement forth in December. If you recall, we extended that agreement six months last June, so we're hopefully going to be wrapping things up and with a successful meeting tomorrow, we'll be able to bring that back to council for ratification in December. If you have any questions on that, let me know. I'll try to go through it at the council meeting. You know, it's very detailed and I don't want to get too detailed, but obviously I will answer any questions that you have and present that. It's been a good process. We've had a good relationship with the Sanitary District and I see that continuing with this new agreement. Road Program, we met today on our plan review on Hillcrest and Fulton and we're also looking to consider bidding out South Park Parking Lot, which is the Phase Two section of the South Park project. So that's moving forward and we would hopefully, if things go well, we'd be looking for a, most likely a February bid date to get the, the project out in the field and open bids late February, early March. We are now using a GIS, or a tablet with GIS access for our utilities to be used in the field for locating sewer water, storm, our public utilities also can be used for property owner identification. We only have one tablet. I want to thank the police chief, this was a hand-me-down from the police department and it's working well for us and thank Josh Warner for his help in getting us set up on that. I imagine once they use it, they'll want a couple more, so. Again, all our utility data's on there. When there's an emergency locate or any kind of underground locate, this can be used rather quickly to help us identify where our utilities are.
You probably should stand in line at Black Friday though if you want some more tab.
Yeah, yeah. We'll work with the one we have right now. Henry will talk a little bit about the Quick Trip roof. We've got some West Fulton LED streetlight proposal that we're looking at. We are attempting to rewrite our water line thawing procedure. Hopefully we won't need that this year. We did have a snow removal event last weekend, unfortunately, and the roads were a little slip and slippery, so we did have to get out there. The county was out on state and county highways as well. And we do have our snow safety meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We are ready, obviously, since we have plow, we are ready for the snow. But we have a safety meeting every year where we talk with all our departments. Police is represented, other departments are there and we just kind of talk through changes to our snow removal procedures and plans and any new employees get caught up in that as well. It's perfect timing since the governor did declare Thursday Snow Plow Driver Appreciation Day, so I'll let each of you decide how you might want to celebrate that day individually, so. There's no communal, no communal event planned, but obviously we do appreciate the efforts that our employees do make and it is a very dangerous operation, not just while they're driving, but even operating the plow, getting in and out of plows are where actually most of our accidents occur, non-vehicular accidents. Just getting in and out of the plow can be dangerous, slippery, slippery with back injuries and that, so we take all that very seriously. And I have some DOT reports that are due the end of the month that I'll be starting here shortly, so. That's all I have in here.
Alright, thanks John. Any questions, comments for John? Alright, let's move on to Parks and Rec, Aaron.
Thank you Mayor. We'll start with the Augy Austin Jim Roof Work that was completed August 24th. Everything went well. There were no additional costs incurred. There was one hiccup with insulation that had bled down an interior wall. Commercial roofing out of Pullover was very, very good to work with. They covered that cost. Christensen Painting came in and took care of that problem, painted that entire wall for a cost of $3,000 and that has been taken care of. The sled hill progress, I just want to give you guys an update on that. If you guys have been out to Swan Park lately, you'll notice some changes. The asphalt has been paved for the new parking lot along with the walking path towards the concession stand. That is taken care of. We also have lights installed at the top of the hill, which was done by Bauer Electric. Signage has been placed for rules of the hill, how, how exactly the traffic is going to work to keep it in a safe, users safe when they're using it. A rope fence has been installed by Josh, our park supervisor, creating that barrier. And we also are going to have some work done in the spring, which includes some parking lot lighting for that new parking lot, which WPS will be completing. The reason it isn't going to be done now is we do not want to pay for winter construction costs. And what we're going to do to, to help light that, we have a Cobra head on the end on one of our fixtures. We're going to change that out into a floodlight that will point in the direction of that new parking lot to better light that area. We also have basketball hoops that will be installed in spring and that's all going to be coming out of money that's been set aside in the amount of about $18,000. That's what we have left in savings from that project. Some of the savings we had through BRM was because we decided to go with a different style lighting system than that, the Musco lighting that was originally talked about. Musco Lighting is, is who does our athletic fields and we looked at other sledding hills in the state and we did not feel that was necessary and we were able to get a lot, lot of savings there, which is good. We're going to keep that kind of away for maintenance, see how everything runs the first couple of years and we'll have some money to do some stuff. We also are planning a grand opening event in, in February. We're meeting on that this Thursday as staff to plan that. A date has not yet been determined. I'll let you guys know. We also are reporting strategic plan, or strategic plan to our townships. Farmington was the first one this, just yesterday and we'll be going to Wapaka, Wapaka, Lynden and Dayton. We are including Lynden there as well. We are working with the school district on the swimming lesson program, kind of changeover. We are, it looks like after talking with Carl Hayek, the business manager, that we will be changing swimming lesson as a summer school program. We had that meeting last week and the reason we want to do this is we can run everything basically the same, but by offering it as a summer school program and having a kind of a figurehead, either a principal or a teacher in charge of that, we can, we are, we open ourselves up for reimbursement for lifeguards wages through the state. And then the school district also benefits because they up their participation numbers, they're allowed to get more state revenue for the summer school kids. So, so right now, we're looking at, after I looked at the numbers, it's looking at probably about a $12,000 cost for those lifeguards and that's, that's a conservative number, so we're hoping that, that $12,000 or more can be saved every year moving forward. That's kind of something we want to do. That's the first thing. We want to make sure we do it well. There might be other opportunities to do that with the school district as well, but you know, we want to take this first step and then look forward from there. We're also applying for fish sticks permit. We're, what you guys have probably heard is tree drops. Through the DNR for Mear Lake, there are a number of residents that have expressed interest in doing fish, tree drop or fish sticks along their shoreline, so we're working through that permitting process. Beginner basketball has started. That has 96 participants as of right now. We also have a, that's also being run at the WLC for convenience of parents, kids, right after school. It's working out, it's working out well. And we've actually seen a jump of about 20 participants because of that, we believe. Cooking class is going on. We have over 20 participants in that. That's a new program and that's also at the school. That's at the Wapaka Middle School. Halloween party was a great success. We had an estimated 400 to 450 attendees that day. I want to give our staff and our senior volunteers especially, and other volunteers, a ton of credit. That's a, that's a fantastic event. The last three years we've done it, it's, we've grown from an estimated 200 to 4 to 450, so over double, over double the attendees. And, you know, I would encourage anyone to stop by next year. We are meeting with the YMCA Director from Stevens Point tomorrow, or I'm sorry, from Nina, as the YMCA here in Wapaka will be run by that Nina branch and kind of governed by them. So we're going to, I'm basically meeting with them for, to discuss possible collaborations and how we can work together. We do have a Serendipity Craft Show this weekend as a part of the Senior Center fundraiser. They're also having a cookbook sale and that is $12 for a cookbook that has about 287 recipes. Is that right Dave? I believe, something like that. So I'd encourage anyone to maybe buy a holiday gift to support the Senior Center there. And then South Park, first of all, I want to thank Brennan for reporting on it. As I missed the last meeting, I was at a state conference. And then I want to thank council for the decision you guys made. I also want to let you guys know that I will be reporting on future phases of South Park in the next meeting, was going to, this meeting, but I know we have a lot to cover with the budget. So with that, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Thanks Aaron. Any questions, comments for Aaron?
Aaron, regarding the sledding hill, is there going to be specific hours and then also will there be staffing out there?
We will not have staffing out there. Lights will turn off at eight, so we're saying the sledding hill closes at eight o'clock at night. We don't want lights on past that with neighbors around the area, so.
Thanks.
And where are you selling the cookbooks?
The cookbooks are sold at the Senior Center or the Rec Center or, and they are available at the craft show this weekend as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Alright, thanks Aaron.
Thank you.
Scott?
Thanks Mayor. My report's in your packet, starting on page 18. To summarize, 83% of the fiscal year has elapsed. We're at about 79.7%. And we are currently in the process of interviewing candidates to fill a vacancy. We plan to fill that probably by mid-December. The rest of the information is in the packet, informational.
Alright. Anybody have any questions? Chief, thank you Chief. Henry?
Thanks Mayor. I'd like to echo your welcome to Kathy. I'd like to welcome you to the team. Really looking forward to the coming months and years as we, you know, try to move our financial stuff forward. We also, it's in my report, but we were awarded that broadband grant that you authorized us to apply for and Josh, I think noted that in his monthly report. Just a heads up, the Hotel Motel Tax Committee is going to be meeting on next Monday and we do have a couple more applications than we've had in the past. I think there's two or three new groups, so that's a really good, I think it's a good thing because more people are applying for projects. And then we did issue a picnic license this past week on my office for the VFW's Christmas dance, so that, my plan is to report every month that we have those. We've given that authority in my office. I think you need to know when those are issued. And then finally, to piggyback on Aaron, the YMCA has announced its grand opening. They're going to have an open house on December 15th from 10 a.m. to 7:00. And we can put something out in the, in an email for the council, but 10 a.m. to 7:00 at the Highway 22 location and that from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the downtown Y location. And then they're going to have a small ribbon cutting ceremony at 10:30 a.m. at the Highway 22 location, so we can get that information out to you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, thanks Henry. Any questions of Henry, comments? Alright, let's move into new business then. This is a special use permit for a Margaret Meyer for 215 Jefferson Street. Brennan, you want to get us going here?
Yep, thank you Mayor, members of council. The applicant is seeking permission to operate a business designated for adult activity, day service and community integration programs for developmentally and physically disabled adults. The program will provide opportunities for adults with disabilities to participate in both in-house and community activities that will enrich, enhance, empower their daily lives. The applicant is seeking to move into the former bank that's located on Jefferson Street. If the council members, we had an application a couple of months ago for a potential church. I was looking to locate there, but due to the city's liquor license, we were unable to accommodate that use. However, Margaret came forward with an alternative use that does meet the zoning code requirements, as long as the council does approve her special use permit. It's a, going to be a smaller operation. It's going to be about five to six total participants. I think that Margaret's looking to start with going into next year. And that's all I have. The applicant is here if there are any specific questions, but we did go through the public hearing process last week Tuesday along with the Plan hearing process last week, Tuesday, along with the planning commission, and there was no opposition or comments in favor or against this proposal.
Brennan, maybe you could just talk a little bit about the recommended conditions that are included in this?
Yep. So, there's, I believe, three recommendations or conditions of approval that the planning commission recommended. One of them is it has to meet state and building, state, building, and fire code. This facility is a historical building, is identified on the state, and I think federal historical building, so that it does have some special accommodations and restrictions that does not have to meet some of them. But I know that John Lust has been over at the building and working with the landowner and the applicant to identify exactly what's going to be needed. Mainly, there's going to have to be a handicap ramp that's going to have to be located on the rear of the building, at least for one of the access points. The glass has been changed out there. The railings have been put up, so there's not going to be any cosmetic differences on the outside, maybe another layer of paint in the future, but the inside will be modified to meet building codes that are required. The second is submission approval of any type of signage. That's going to go on the building. And then the third one, I actually spoke with the landowner, Mr. Harold Stibbs, late last year, early this year, the council approved the used car dealership next door to this facility, and there has been some cross parking of his vehicles onto this property. My understanding is Harold and the applicant have worked through those differences on where the vehicles will be able to park. This is going to be not an intensive use for vehicles on the property of drop-off or employee parking, so I'm letting the, the landowner and the two tenants actually deal with the parking on the two properties.
Okay. And I think as Brennan said, Margaret is here tonight if we had any questions of her. This was recommended for approval by the City Planning Commission.
I have a question.
Sure.
By putting a ramp on the back, which I know is necessary, will you be voiding anything as far as the historic register?
Nope. We actually, thank you for bringing that up. We did speak with Scott Christie of the Historical Preservation Committee, and he is in agreement with all the recommendations that John Lust and has come up with for what is needed for exterior or interior improvements on that building.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Motion?
I move to approve the special use permit for Margaret Meyer at 215 Jefferson Street.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fenske, that we approve of the special use permit for Margaret Meyer at 215 Jefferson Street with the three conditions that Brennan had just discussed with you. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Sandy. Good luck, Margaret. Okay, let's move on then to the former QuickTrip roof reconstruction. Henry, you have the...
Yeah, at least I'll set it up, and there might be some questions, and some other staff can pitch in. It is, I have a memo on this. It's on page 142 of your packet. If you recall, over the last couple of months, there have been some actions taken by the council to kind of facilitate this work. Because the project is located in the downtown, because of our fire district rules, a parapet wall was required. Unfortunately, before we purchased the building, there were really no issues with that roof because we deduced that the coolers were providing, the heat coming off the coolers in the old QuickTrip were keeping that roof nice and warm, and that water was shedding. We acquired the building, and we've had some issues with that roof ever since we've acquired it. We've looked at different options and determined that this is really the best fix. John Edelbeck and Brennan kind of took the initial lead to figure out if we could actually put a more typical roof on there. And if you remember, we adopted what's called a no-build easement, and that city attorney got involved, the state got involved to work us through that. So, we're now at the point where we can actually get the work done, and in the packet, we did receive three quotes. The work had to be designed, and the plans had to be approved by the state of Wisconsin, and they, and they were, and we got that approval on November 4th. So, we reached out and got some quotes, and you can see that there are three companies, local companies, that gave a quote. There's really two pieces of work, masonry work and then carpentry work, and we allowed the companies to bid one facet or both facets, and Barons chose just to do the masonry, and then the two firms Hammer City and Muck Construction proposed to do a turnkey job. And you can see the bids there. Hammer City was $8,003.35, and Muck Construction was $7,520. So, based on that, staff is coming forward with a recommendation to award the work to Muck Construction for a cost not to exceed the $7,520. I don't know if you have specific questions on the work or anything of that nature?
Hopefully, this is it on that building.
Well, yes. Fun being a landlord, Mayor.
No comment.
I'm not going to say it again.
But this, in all seriousness, should really fix that problem, and I think it is the best solution.
Henry, is there adequate funds in that account to cover this?
Well, you know, we segregated that account, right? And the revenue from that is in a, you know, it's, we're not, that's not general revenue. We kind of segregated it, and we did look at it the other day. We're actually up about $2,000, you know, income over expenses. We had to spend a number of thousands of dollars to get the building ready, so now we've basically got that all paid off. So, I probably want to actually have Kathy weigh in at some point here, but, you know, the work's got, the money's got to get paid now, so we'll have to advance it, and then when the income comes in, you know, we can pay the general fund back, whoever advances the dollars. But right now, there's about $2,000 in that segregated fund, so that's kind of where we stand.
That will come out of reserves then, or out of the general fund?
Well, yeah, essentially.
Why do it?
Yeah. But it would get paid back. Our income's about $1,500 a month, so, you know, four months, get the money back.
I'll make a motion that we approve the work to be done by Muck, $7,520 for the QuickTrip building roof restoration. Close.
Second. Real close. Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve of the roof reconstruction for the old QuickTrip building, and the bid of Wayne Muck at a number not to exceed $7,520.
Just a minor point, the staff recommendation said for total cost not to exceed $7,500. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to fight him for that.
I caught that when I was reading it, but, thanks, Alan.
Okay, so it is $7,520.
Yeah, I attached their bid to it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Henry. Next, we're going to move on to unfinished business, which is the fiscal year 2015 budget, and that is also in the form of a resolution, which is Resolution Number 1344, 2014. We did have a public hearing before our council meeting started tonight. We did not have anybody that spoke at that meeting for or against at that meeting. That's one point of emphasis. And then the other, Henry, you had a couple of things you wanted to bring up. One was the blue sheet that you handed out.
Yes, Mayor. Alderman Hackett called me yesterday and had a question on the total levy, and that was my error preparing this last week. I picked up on Jean's last version of her budget summary, which, you've seen this before in past years, okay? This is the blue sheet I'm talking about. And there is a slight difference of a couple, about $2,200 in levy. The resolution in your packet is correct, and the summary sheet reflects the correction. And I picked up, as you can see, the $3,539 number in all my remarks, so just wanted to set the record straight on that. In terms of the overview, it doesn't really impact very much. It does drop the tax rate, proposed tax rate, a penny to 1026. So, that's really all I had there, Mayor. Just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that error.
Okay. So, we've had just about a month here since you've seen the draft budget. Anybody would like to start here?
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution Number 1344.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayo, a second by Fenske, that we approve of Resolution Number 1344. This is the, a resolution designating appropriations and levying a tax for the 2015 budget for the city of Wapaka. This is fiscal year 2015. Discussion. Scott, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to be clear now, we are going to pass this budget resolution, and if we pass this one as presented, we are in effect passing this capital loan that we're going to go out and get through.
We are, by passing this resolution, you are accepting the loan payments, but we are going to make a motion to approve the loan after this.
Well, in that, if you let me hold the floor, then I guess I would be remiss to my constituents if I didn't voice my concern over the component of this budget, and that being the capital borrow. I've had some comments on it, and we all know we represented a four-part options that we could use for this capital borrow, and we, I mean, eight of us as a voting body here, decided to go with the Cadillac, as they say, of the four options, which is a million-plus borrow. I guess I can't, in my mind, back that. I think we maybe overreached ourself a little on that total borrow, as far as I'm concerned. I guess I understand fully, though, that we need some of that capital to be borrowed to fix some of the infrastructure we do have that needs fixing in this city. But I believe there's things, several things, that amount to quite a few dollars that we could reduce in that capital borrow, and thus maybe help reduce the mill rate overall. I realize it's a balancing act, but that's my feeling, and some of the people I've had comments from, something gets considered, I guess.
Okay. Scott, those are comments, or are you making a motion?
I didn't think I could make a motion because there's one on the floor.
You certainly can. You certainly can make a motion that would be, a motion, explain that for me, will you, Mr. Hart? We have a motion on the floor, but we can also have a second motion that would reduce or increase that motion. We can subtract things or add things to the motion that's on the floor, correct?
I think the person who made the motion allows it.
Right. Yeah. But he would...
He can suggest that he amend his motion if he doesn't want to. I don't think he's going to get in. Not motion on the floor, you got to act on it. It's a...
Okay. All right. All right. That's different than what we've normally done.
He's expressed his opinion. I think that's fair.
Okay. All right.
Henry, do you recall if, like, let's say, for example, we took the lowest of those four options, what would, what would the mill rate go down to? Like, right now, it's like a 30 cent, 38 cents increase per thousand, right? But this proposal...
Well, I'm not prepared.
Oh, okay.
John on that, because, you know, we vetted all that back in July.
Well, I was just saying, I mean, were we talking like a dime or something? I mean, what's, what would the difference be?
Yeah. There wasn't a big difference. Really, the very bare bones option was just the roof, and I think a commitment to do a little bit of roadwork because you authorized that study to be done. But between options two and three, or two and four, the difference, you know, you could structure that debt in a lot of different ways, and so there wasn't a big difference because I assumed a 10-year loan in like option two, but a little bit longer loan in option three and four. But this is, what's in your packet is a 10-year loan, amortization for 10-year loan.
The first option was a mill rate impact of .163, and then option two was .451. Substantial jump. Twenty-two.
So, almost, that would be what, 30, 28 cents? Is that what your difference?
I want to hand that to him.
Is that right, Jillian?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the one you were talking about?
So, instead of being at $10.37, that would be, if you were to take the lower one, at, giving, answering your answer to that, that would be 28 cents less.
Oh, I see.
28, 29 cents less.
That was just between options one and two, and then obviously it got bigger as you went with option three and four, but even the mill rate impact might have been less because you're structuring the loans out differently. It's still a huge difference in the amount that we're borrowing, whether it's $275,000 in option one or $1.1 million in option four. It's still spending a lot of our taxpayer dollars whether, depending on how you structure it.
Mm-hmm.
Big jump. So, I would agree with Scott. I don't, I don't agree with this. These numbers are this big of a borrow. It's too much, it's too much on our taxpayers to handle. I don't agree with it at all. I think we need to go back and, and look at what our needs truly are with the debt dropping off in a couple of years. I feel like we need to wait. That'd be the responsible thing to do would be to wait until some of that debt drops off so that we can absorb some of, some of these other needs a little bit, a little bit more efficiently.
Scott, go ahead.
Henry, did we ever ask Bear how this is going to impact, you know, potential borrowings that we keep layering on? You know, what if in two or three years, we want to borrow some more? I mean, I, that's another concern, and I never heard much discussion or any on that. We've got projects on the horizon that are going to be multimillion dollars, and I'm just concerned that, did anybody put that in the equation at all?
Well, if you remember, we had a pretty extensive discussion on our debt policies, and actually, we're more strict than the state statutes require. So, you're already putting a marker out there saying we want to be conservative with our borrowing. In the packet, you can see that there's still a lot of debt capacity left. Now, you're absolutely right. As a staff, we've had that discussion. We need to get back together with you. I don't know that it needs to be this year, but given that we need more time... I don't know that it needs to be this year, but given that we need more time to, you know, vet the projects, I think we want to look at the capitals, the capital projects again. Because the timing right now is just one year between Main Street and Public Works Facility. And I think council needs to make that determination. But for tonight's purposes, this borrow is well within our debt policies that you reviewed extensively back in the summer and made those decisions. So, and we came to staff, and what's in this budget is what was directed by the majority of council was to borrow that one point one million. If it makes you feel better, I did get the Fox Valley Tech levy. And using the current, you know, plugging their stuff in, on a hundred-thousand-dollar house, you're going to save about eighty-two dollars on their portion of your tax bill, eighty-two bucks, all right? The proposal that's in front of you is going to increase people's taxes about thirty-seven dollars a year. So basically, we're backfilling one-third of somebody's overall tax bill right now with our stuff, which, as a city, you know, we're focusing on what's important to the city and make the city operate. And the increase, the overall budget's about, in levy, excuse me, in my note here, is about a hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars, of which ninety is that debt payment. So really, the majority of that levy increase is really focused on getting some things fixed and putting some money back into our operation. I mean, we're a twelve-million-dollar company, and we probably have a couple hundred million of assets. So a one-million-dollar investment in our operations and our assets is really pretty small when you look at it, but...
Just going back, I looked, on page one seventy-two is what we're discussing now. And I looked over it pretty carefully, at least what I thought was pretty carefully. And the only place I can see where we can really drop is that South Park Phase Two approved grant match of twenty thousand. We gave the Park and Rec twenty-three thousand, or whatever it was the other day. We can drop that twenty thousand there. That's not going to help a lot, but it'll help some.
Yeah, and we did have some discussion on that. If you remember what Steve's bringing up at the last meeting, we had some excess funds left over from when we closed out the project, and we designated that money, I think it was unanimous vote, we designated, oh, minus one, okay? That money to a non-lapsing account. So we could reduce our borrow by that, what did you say, Steve, twenty-three thousand?
It was twenty-three we gave them, but I don't remember the exact figure, but this South Park Phase...
There's twenty in there.
There's twenty, right.
Okay. So we could reduce the borrow by twenty thousand because we already are covering our match of that, so we wouldn't need to borrow for that. So we would be at one million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If you would like to amend your motion, all the person Mayo and Fenske, okay? You're okay with that? All right. Scott, I want to give you the ability to see what the rest of the council members feel about, and Jillian, too, for that matter. So I still believe, and whether Attorney Hart believes me or agrees with me or not, I still believe you have the right to ask or poll the council whether they would like to see what you're asking be reduced. Now, whether you make it in the form of a motion, or you just ask the individual council members whether they agree with you or not, you certainly have that right to do that.
I guess, I don't know if I should go around and poll each one, but I, you know, I, there's things in this borrow that I see could maybe be pushed off till the two years come when we get big debt drop off, and then there's things that should be left in here. I think there's critical things, and then there's things that are not so critical. And, I mean, I could go through them here, but, you know, I see potential, just looking at things from my perspective, when I ran through it quickly, you know, reducing it, some of these non-critical things that are, in my mind, reducing this borrow by at least maybe three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and still get a lot of the critical needs done in this city. And the other things we can work on in two years, whatever. And that's, I guess, my question to each one of you, if you want to speak up. That would help maybe reduce the mill rate, the effect to the taxpayer. The debt load, debt policy aside, I know we have a debt policy, but that, every time we go into debt, it costs us money, so.
Scott, which items are you looking at that are making up?
Three hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, just a second.
What page are you on, Scott?
One seventy-two. It's the CIP plan. I, let's see, I had a, I, I'll just try to go over here and, first of all, we've got City Hall, you know, carpeting, exterior painting, leave the valve, BAV boxes in, carpeting, interior painting, leave the security system in, main desk, contingency, street signs get down on the bottom there. Going up to Public Works, we've got a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar loader and a eighty-five-thousand-dollar haul truck. And I may be remiss in my, but, you know, we can start adding up, and...
So what are you, what are you saying that you're subtracting? I'm missing what you're asking here.
Well, he asked me my question, what I want to subtract.
Okay. And those are, the things that you just mentioned are all the ones that you want to subtract?
Right. You know, and it's...
So do you want, like, the, when you said City Hall, you went over the carpet and the painting, did you want those out or in?
Out.
Okay.
And I had a sheet here where I had ticked them all off, and I can't really find it right now, but that's, it's kind of my gist if, there's things that are critical, I think, and things that aren't, and it's, that's where the reduction would come in the borrow. And that's my mind, critical or not critical. And I think we can, we can bandy about the total all we want, but until I can make a motion, I guess, that's kind of my, you know, comment on it. This is the list that totals the borrow. We can go and decide if I, if we have the chance to, so.
Mayor?
Yeah, Paul.
Scott, I'm going to disagree with you. There's nothing on this list that's extravagant at all. You mentioned the hauling truck. It's a nineteen ninety hauling truck that thinks twenty-five years old. Who keeps their car twenty-five years? No, nobody, or very few people. The nineteen ninety-five loader, that's a twenty-year-old loader. If we put these things off or take them off the list, they're not going to go away, you know? You say put it off for a couple of years. Well, in a couple of years' time, there's going to be new stuff that comes up that we need to replace, in addition to this, that we're postponing. You know, we can put all this stuff in a drawer that you suggest and hope it, you know, keeps running and that, you know, the implication is that it's going to go away, but none of this stuff goes away. And we're going to have to deal with future financial capital items down the road, too, that were not even listed here. So I don't think that there's really anything on this list, with the exception of what Steve brought up, that can be postponed reasonably.
I agree with Paul. I think, you know, we've had a lot of time to think about this already. We've had discussion on it. I think it's too much an eleventh hour to make those kinds of changes now. What is important to you, Scott, is not important to others, maybe, and vice versa. I think the budget as constructed is well thought out and should be approved.
I also agree with Paul and Al. I just, I went down the list, too, Scott, and I, some of these things that you think aren't important, I really kind of thought were, so I didn't complain about any of them.
And I don't think that these things that, you know, from what he was saying, too, I agree with, that could be removed from the borrow. You know, I don't think we think that they're going to go away, but in a couple of years, we're going to be in a better financial position where a lot of our debt is dropping off, and we're going to have the money to be able to do those things. And, you know, I don't, I don't think anybody thinks that they're just going to disappear, but I think we'll be in a better financial position in a couple of years to do these things. Not saying that they're not important, but right now, I don't, I don't think it's responsible to do all of these things.
Deb, go ahead.
I agree with Paul and Steve and Al. I think it's time to do these things. I think we've been waiting a really long time, and I think we're doing the responsible thing by getting these things done. I understand what Jillian and Scott are saying. You know, I, after I got your email, I was looking and looking and looking like you did, Steve. And everything I remembered, I went back through my notes, and everything that I can find, we felt that this stuff was important. The other thing that I really like is that in two thousand eighteen, we're going to be getting about eight hundred thousand dollars back every year, not given to us, but you know what I mean? The debt's going to drop off, and there's no prepayment penalty for the loan. So it's going to give us a chance, if we, if we want to, to pay back this loan a lot faster than ten years. It's my opinion. I really think that this is good, aside for the twenty thousand, and I hope, Aaron, I hope you don't mind that we're going to pull that. But that's what I would vote for.
Anybody else that would like to make some comments?
I guess I'll say a little bit, Mayor, that being new, I was impressed by the table or the chart that council put out or the staff put out, saying that we really haven't raised the city portion more than once in fifteen years. Almost seems like it is when you're paying your taxes, the entities that come into that property tax bill. And do keep putting this stuff off, because it's going to add up in really big whack sometime in the future. Hope for that.
You know, something to think about, too, is, right now, Henry, what's the interest rate that we're getting for this loan?
Um...
One something, one point nine?
Three point five zero.
Oh, I'm sorry, three point five. Well, still, that's really low. We don't know what it's going to be in two years. Interest rates are going to increase. And if we don't get these things, this, like you mentioned, this loader and this hauling truck, what are the costs that the Public Works Department is throwing into those things now to keep them running? You know, those, that's money that we don't get back. I'm leaning towards the side with, glad with Paul, Steve, and Deb, that we move forward and get this stuff, this stuff done and have our city run the way it needs to be run.
Any other?
Eric? Yeah, I suppose I can speak as well. I appreciate your concern as well, and I don't like to see taxes raised, but I think a lot of this stuff has been pushed off for a long time already, and I do think it's time. So I'm willing to move forward with it, and we gave our public opportunity to come in tonight and concern their, or speak on their concerns, and nobody did. So I, I'm ready to vote.
Anybody else? I just have one comment that I think we should all think of this as we go forward. If, if we didn't have anything else to do, if we had no capital in the future, what you're saying, Scott and Jillian, makes sense. Makes a lot of sense to us. But that's not the case. We have a lot of other equipment out there that's getting older that we're going to have to replace in the near future. We have a Main Street project that we're going to have to do, and how extensive is that going to be? Does it include redoing water and sewer and the road? We have no idea what that cost is going to be. And we've also talked about a Public Works facility, which we need, and we've put it off because we can't afford it at this time. So we need to start going down that list and making sure that we, that we do try to get a lot of these things done before we get to that point where we have the big items that we have to do. I mean, and I'm just, I hate to put a number there, but let's say that the, that the Main Street project cost us four million dollars, and now we add another one point two million dollars onto that four million because we have to pay for all of these things in two years or four years, then we're going to have even a larger borrow at that time. So, I mean, this gives us an opportunity to get a couple of years of payments in there already, get lower interest rates. As Deb said, if our debt does fall off fast enough, gives us the opportunity to prepay some of this so we can reduce it even more. Plus, it gives us equipment so that if, you know, I mean, some of this equipment helps us to maintain the quality of life that we have in our city. And without having that, if the loader breaks down and your street doesn't get plowed, you're probably going to get a lot of phone calls. So, I mean, like Paul said, something that's twenty-five, thirty years old, how much longer can we really expect it to last? I think, you know, as I go through working with the staff and working with council and, as we went through the budget process, it's not easy to raise taxes, and that's why we haven't done it very often. In, anybody that's been on council for the last ten years or so, you haven't seen it happen very often. We just got to the point where we felt there is no other option. We have to get this stuff done, and we're not looking to reduce the general fund. We're trying to keep the services where we are. And actually, we're trying to increase our services a little bit with these, with this budget, too. Quite honestly, as we went through this budget, the first time with the staff, the first time I went through with the staff, the staff actually, whether they agreed or got strong-armed, they actually agreed to a half percent decrease in their pay rate to help cover these expenses and so on, which says a lot for what they're trying to do here, too. So it's not, it's not an easy decision. It's a very difficult decision, but it's the right decision to make in this case. Anybody else have any other comments? Sandy will call the roll on Resolution Number thirteen forty-four, two thousand fourteen.
John Lockwin?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
No.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
No.
And Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two noes. Motion carried.
We have one more motion that we need to make, and that's for the purposes of the borrow, we will have to change that dollar amount. In the budget, actually, has the payment, but it doesn't have the actual borrow, so we, we need to have a motion to approve the borrow, and that would be at twenty thousand dollars less. So it'd actually be, that's in your packet, it would be one million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
If you're getting it off one seventy-two, I think it should be one one fifty-three.
Well, there's a little bit of issuance cost in there, Steve. Go to the page, the next page that has the debt schedule. See that? And at the top, you can see the amount of the loan. There's some money in there for issuance costs.
So it's a total of one, it was a total of, that's okay. One, Sandy did this for me, so I have the advantage. One million one hundred and ninety thousand, and we subtracted twenty, so we're looking at one million one hundred and seventy thousand, and that does include the issuance cost. So we're borrowing the issuance, issuance cost, too.
I would move for approval.
Second.
A motion by Fenske, second by Hackett, that we approve of the borrow to not exceed one million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
John Lockwin?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
No.
No.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
No.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two noes, motion carried.
Thank you, everybody. Staff, council members, thank you for your hard work on our fiscal 2015 budget and we'll look forward to another year. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting?
Oh, I have one thing. I just want to remind everybody, and thank you, Scott, for reminding me, Thursday night at emergency planning, there's going to be a presentation by CN Railroad and promises to be a good presentation. And that will be in the police department upstairs conference room.
I would like...
Explosive presentation?
Explosive. Uh, the meeting starts at 5:30?
I would like to make a little statement. And this, I think we should take care of when we assign committees next year or whatever. And I believe that the public works should have a committee. The airport board has a committee, the parking wreck has one, the police and fire commission have one, the city planning, the library, the recycling, room tax. We'll pack a senior center, we'll pack area fire department, we'll pack a C, EBG housing committee, historic, the historic prevention, the historical society, the downtown vision committee. Everybody has a committee except one important function in the city, which is very important and that's public works, which does not have a committee. And I really believe they should have a committee.
Okay.
And I think it's something we should take up before the end of, or before elections are over and we reassign everybody.
What is, what is entailed in creating that committee? Is it, I mean, what sort of structural change does it take? We would have to change our ordinance to add that committee back in there if we wanted to do that. And any of the other committees that we have, have, when we went to the two committees or the two council meetings, we got rid of the big four, which was finance, personnel, judiciary and public works. And Steve is, right now, you're just talking about public works. Right.
Judiciary does still kind of have their committee? In a sense. And I'm not thinking of the whole council, I'm just thinking of Brennan and some of the things he does. But anyway, I just think that should be under consideration.
Do we, I mean, you have, any council member has any right to have an item put on the council agenda, so Steve, would you like to see that in December, January, February?
Whenever before.
March?
Before you assign committees.
Probably March.
I'm not many very... We got a lot of committees.
Just so Sandy can put it on her calendar and so she can remember it?
Well, we got to change the ordinance change for two meetings, right? So we...
She almost had to. Why don't we do it the first of the, one of the first two meetings in Jan, or the, either the first or second meeting in January? That will give us time to get everything in place if we agree to that. Anybody else have anything else for the meeting? Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we adjourn our meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at 7:21 PM. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Have a great night.